So I will call the meeting to order. I have nothing to add to the agenda. I do think... Did we have something on the agenda about the bank?
No, we took it off.
We took it off?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's not ready. Okay, so...
I can take things off the agenda.
Yeah, except we have to put them up the next one. It's not all that. All right, so I don't see anybody from the public. So let's move on to the consent agenda. I just passed around the minutes from May 22nd. In case you hadn't thought to go... They were posted on the website, but they weren't in your actual packet. So...
Yes, they were.
That was my fault. My printer died.
Oh, they were in the packet. Okay.
The page went fast. One couldn't find them.
Marla told me they weren't there. I thought I had read them and then I should have gone back and looked. Okay. Does anyone need to pull anything from the consent agenda? Andre?
Does this have the latest appointment with minutes? Because we had another one that came through today.
Right, so we will add that one. But we can do that as we make the motion.
Other than that, we're good to go then.
Okay.
Are we talking about the Spanish?
Yes.
Espanol.
Are you ready? Do you want to make the motion, Marla?
I've got it right here for you.
I have.
I would like to move the cons... I'd like to approve the consent agenda with the meeting minutes of May 16th, 2017, and May 22nd, 2017, and approve the request to be released from the 2017-18 contract, Kimberly Desjardins at Hiawatha, and the FMLA request for Essex High School, Ashley Bree, approve the appointment of Erica DeVeese, 5th grade classroom teacher, FMS, Benjamin Drew, Social Studies, EHS, Ryan Ferron, Middle School Math Teacher, EMS, Chelsea Henderson, 4th grade classroom teacher, FMS, Ellen Knoll, Speech Language Pathologist at ADL, Angela Letter, I hope I pronounced it right, 5th grade classroom teacher, FMS, Benjamin Turley, Learning Specialist/Special Educator for FLM, and Rena K. Garnaccia, is that how I pronounce it?
Reyna.
Reyna?
Reyna.
Reyna, and Spanish teacher at EHS.
Okay, wonderful. This motion does not have discussion, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing. Thank you, Martha. Okay, so the big item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of the Vermont Department of Health's findings on this study. They did looking at the health impacts of bus transportation. And so Tom and Amy, if you could come forward.
Is it all right if we pull up some chairs?
Yes, please do. Yeah, and if we could keep this to about a half hour, that would be good. I think you should assume that people have read the materials that you sent.
Drive Tom or you want me to drive?
You should have put the headlines. Okay? Great, thanks.
So thank you all for giving us some time on the agenda tonight. And I know that you received a draft of the report, and that's great. We have since updated it a little bit. So there's a final version now. I think you saw a draft too. So we brought three hard copies of the final report, and we brought executive summary copies for everyone, just so you'd have something in front of you for this presentation. And we'll email the final PDF to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, just to get... So I'm Amy Malinowski. I'm a Public Health Supervisor in the Burlington District Office of the Health Department. And Tom Boden is our School Health Specialist, Public Health Specialist. You'll remember us because this is our third, our team's third time at your school board meeting. So we thought we'd give you just maybe super brief HIA. We didn't know if there would be members of the community here to go into more detail of the process, but you're all pretty familiar with it, so we'll keep that brief and a little bit of history, and then go into our findings and recommendations, which are slightly updated since when we last came, which I think was in May, right, or March. I was on maternity leave for four months of this process, so I get the dates a little mixed up. So just to recap, of course, you all know this, but an HIA is really just a systematic process to look at a decision on that might be happening in a community that may not typically always look or consider what the health impacts might be. So it adds a health lens to that process. So that's what we did with your transportation policy. I'll go over the steps very briefly and kind of give you a sense of where we're at now. Screening is the first step. So we decided this was a good idea to do back a year ago, last June, when we had our first meeting with Mark and Diane. We scoped at this meeting also in September, the school board meeting, and with our advisory committee to focus on the health impacts of physical activity, mental health, and personal injury and safety. We've done our assessment, so I'm going to recap our assessment slide in a few slides coming up. Based on that assessment, we've developed recommendations that we hope you will consider and use as you're further developing your transportation policy. And now we're in our reporting phase, so here we are. Report, reporting back to you all. And I'll also touch base a little bit later on in the presentation on our plans for monitoring the, if the recommendations are implemented, in our evaluation plan, which we're hoping all of you will be part of as well. So this was the original timeline that we brought to your school board meeting back in September, and this is where we are now, so we're right on track, which feels good. It's June. What do I have to say about that slide? Maybe I should man. So I'll just review our assessment methods. So we looked at existing health conditions, and a bulk of that information came from your local youth risk behavior survey data, both at the middle and the high school level. We also looked at injury data that was provided by EMS database. We did a parent survey, and that was a lot of what we presented on the last time we, our team came to your school board meeting. We also did a student focus group, where we vetted our recommendations with sort of cross-section of students from Essex High School who live in different communities. And we did a literature review of national sources of data, and also research that has happened even in other countries to help inform our recommendations. So the parent survey has gotten probably the most press in the community, but it was one component, and it was one component of all of this other assessment data that we looked at, so we wanted to highlight that. We also talked to a lot of people. We convened a community advisory committee. We've met three times, and we're going to have a closing meeting in July. We've come here to have your assistance, and also the assistance of the administration and school staff to help us along the way. And when we developed our recommendations, we did a lot of key informant interviews with folks like bus drivers and school nurses and other school staff, just to make sure these recommendations, if they're feasible, and how they should be revised at all, to make sure that they are actually something that are practical and useful for your community. So that was really very invaluable, that process. So this is a really quick snapshot of the findings that we had. So the way that the report is outlined looks at the three different modes of transportation, whether it be district-provided busing service, active transportation like walking and biking, and transport in a personal vehicle. And we looked at those three different scenarios based on the health outcomes that were scoped in the beginning, so injury and safety, physical activity, and mental health. And this is just a little snapshot of whether we think these different methods of transportation either have a positive impact on the health outcome, a negative impact, or somewhat inconclusive, where there could be some positive impacts, and there also could be some negative impacts. So the details of how this chart came to be is found in the bulk of all of this information. But just to kind of walk through an example of how that might look for that first bullet, the positive impact of district-provided transport on injury and personal safety, we looked at data that came out of the parent survey on that. We also looked at National Highway Safety Administration data that looked at traffic fatalities on different modes of transportation. We also looked at what's required for Vermont school bus driver standards and their safety requirements. And those are the different pieces of data that really went into determining is it going to be a positive impact or not for that particular health impact. So similar, similar different data sources were all compiled to come to those conclusions. Do you have any questions on that? Because this was not something that was probably in the draft that you read. This is a little bit.
I've got a question. When I'm looking at transport and personal vehicles, personally myself under mental health when my son was in school and having to get him to school and having to get to work by a certain time, some of that mental health was if I was upset and not able to get him to school on time, if I was waiting for a bus, or if he was too young walking, or whatever, I would think that mental health would be negative or positive. Because if a parent is got to be to work on time and they're stressed out, and the only way they can do it is to drop their own kid off at school.
Yeah, I think that, so that, we came to that conclusion. There aren't a lot of studies that look at commuting of students, but there are a lot of studies that look at commuting of adults and what their health outcomes when you are in a stressful commuting situation. So we did have to, for this section, you'll see when you read it, it, we did have to make some generalizations to this population and this scenario, which is a little bit different. But that was more, more about that, that just a general overall stress of that, your commuting pattern, than exactly that, like getting your kid to school and also you getting yourself to work on time, and how that, those, that stress of that commute can cause negative health outcomes for you as a commuter. So it's a little bit of a generalization on that one.
I guess my comment on that, as the individual who has transported their kids to the high school, I see that as an additional quality time family-wise. So I would say that that could be...
It could be positive.
Negative slash positive impact.
Yeah, I actually was just talking about that with someone today, a resident, and that was the same comment that she made, that she valued that time in the car, just to check in on the day. So we didn't find necessarily research on that for this report, but that doesn't mean that those aren't other benefits that could, yeah, those are really good points. I think the overall take-home message that we wanted to, kind of when you look at all the different scenarios and put them all together as an overall finding for the community is that walking and biking and active transportation has the best outcomes for physical activity, clearly. And there's a lot of research to support that. There's also positive impacts on mental health for physical activity. And while that would be impacted by that positive, by that active transportation, that whether parents choose to use active transportation or not really depends on their commuting patterns, their perceptions of safety. It feels, it's ironically feels safer to drive your kids to school, but then you're adding more cars to the road, which then actually makes it not as safe to be. So it's like a, kind of a paradox that we found in the literature, and also it came back from the parent survey, and also travel distance. So if you really are outside of that half mile of a radius for walking, that really drops really low, and that's pretty clearly stated in the literature, and a mile for biking. So those are kind of the really strong recommendations that we saw. The other ones, there's a, there's a lot of sort of mixed research, and those are really So that's a quick overview of our findings. You saw a version of our recommendations. They're a little bit updated, so we just want to go through them and give you some, you know, additional context. So it, so because of that, it may seem like we're encouraging everybody to take the bus, but really it's the active transportation, as I just said, would have a lot of health benefits. And there are a lot of reasons why people don't do it, basically. So busing would be safer than driving in your own car, just from an injury standpoint. And having late busing would increase equity for students who may not be able to participate in after-school activities otherwise, or might have transportation issues. So that's what that first recommendation is about. The second recommendation is, is about that unsupervised time. We saw that come through, that parents are worried about idle time, where kids are dropped off really early for school, or waiting around late after school, and there's a time in there where there's potential for some unsafe activities to happen. So there's recommendations in the report, for example, from the Burlington School District, where they have an early morning activity program that provides some physical activity, and it also gives kids something to do, so it's not an idle time. So throughout the report, you'll see some more concrete examples of how you could actually use this in your district, potentially. Enforcing student behavior, that didn't change from last time, I don't think. The fourth one, adult supervision, this may not be feasible, we heard this may not be feasible from a cost standpoint to have an additional adult on the bus. So perhaps it's something that you look at your data, your behavior data in the beginning of the year, take an assessment, you know, assessment of that, and then maybe identify some buses where it could actually be helpful. The bus drivers really appreciated this recommendation. It's a lot to have to drive the bus and manage that. The next sort of clump of recommendations is around injury prevention and physical activity, because the two are so intertwined. If you have improved school zone safety, you'll have more people feeling comfortable walking and biking. So there's a recommendation around crossing guards, around bicycle parking, working with municipal staff to provide, to prioritize which infrastructure would provide safe routes. There's a really good example from Newport City Schools, where they mapped all the schools where students live, which you have to do anyway for the bus routes, and by density of where there were large populations of students, planned out their safe physical activity, you know, safe routes to school from that same data. So it's really using information that you have to help bolster your safe routes to school program as well as your busing. Because you already have to map, you already have to have your routes. So there's a good, another local Vermont example. Using enforcement and really there's signs at the schools, but really improving the communication of where cars need to be in the school zones, and doing some enforcement to really help that reinforce that, yeah. There's a good example where people are, you know, I think from the Center for Problem-Oriented Policing, you'll see in the report, where they, communities use the fines that they give people when they're violating to improve their safety to school program. So there's ways you can really, like creatively fund efforts to improve safety in physical activity. And then number nine, the minimizing the individual, there's always going to be people that are going to drop off their kids. So really minimizing that amount of people and making it safe. And there's other sort of sub-recommendations in there to grant priority dismissal, for example, for the active transportation users, for the walkers and bikers, maybe they're dismissed a little bit early, so it's an incentive to do that. And then they're out of the way when your cars and your buses come in, so that's sort of a sub-recommendation, and using potentially remote drop-off locations, so dropping off in another area, and then having some sort of safe way to get kids to the school. So I was, I felt like really fast, but I wanted to be mindful of your time, so they're all in there. This is an example, we're called them strategies for success, so you'll see in the report, they're sort of sprinkled throughout of different examples of actual, some feedback we got from our advisory committee was, it's fine to have the recommendations, but we need to see actually how are we going to do this? So we really tried to provide some real practical examples that the administration and the school board and the community might be able to take on and implement next year. So our next steps, we are now disseminating the report, we're thinking about ways to disseminate this information in a more digestible way to the general public, and thinking about maybe making a little video that we can post on our Facebook and then share also with you. We're figuring that piece of it out now. We are still around as the Health Department Technical Support Crew for School Health, so when you're trying to implement these recommendations, we, our staff can come in and help schools figure out how to do that. And that's one way that we're going to kind of be monitoring if you'll, you all will accept our recommendations as you're implementing your policy. So we're planning to do that through already existing systems we have to provide support to your school. We're also about to embark on our evaluation of this whole process, because we always want to improve if, on how this went. So to that end, you'll all be receiving a survey from us that you hopefully will complete, because you are the, really the decision-makers in this, and we want to continue to improve, like I said, with any community that we might do a project with. We're also going to be sending the survey to our advisory committee and doing internal in the Health Department, not just our process of how we did our work, but the impact of, did it really make an influence on your, your decision-making around this? So we want to know. So you'll be hearing from us again. And that's sort of the last step of the process. That was so much, like, portentous. So I'll leave these three reports, and like I said, we'll email you, but happy to answer questions.
Can we still ask questions?
Absolutely.
Got a question. Do you folks have? Got a question on, I'm not sure if I've read this as detailed as I should be. When you talk about adding extra staff on the bus to help monitor, do you know if there's other school districts in the state of Vermont that does this?
You know, I asked Pat McManaman, he's the, he works for the Vermont Department of Motor Vehicles, and he's the school bus safety guru, and he doesn't know of any other schools in Vermont. He said, "It sounds like a great idea."
Because it's expensive.
Yeah, there might be, you know, some other national models that we could look into, and I don't know, Essex Westford School District could be the cutting edge.
Cutting edge to it all, right?
At first. But he didn't know, and he, I, he really, I think, is someone who has his sort of like finger on the pulse of what's going on in school busing in the state, and he didn't know of any other examples.
And how many other school districts have you done this for?
You're our first.
Where the, I thought we were.
Yeah, we've done three other health impact assessment processes, but they were on transportation studies in communities and land use planning process in the south end of Burlington. So this is really the first one that's related to school transportation. But he, Pat, did read it, and, you know, hoping that this will influence the way that, you know, school busing happens and safety happens for the state would be kind of neat, because this is a little bit, this is new, kind of groundbreaking.
And then just a suggestion for disseminating it? When we, when we did our study for Essex Westford School District, the RED study, I loved how we did a video before informational meetings. Brendan was chair of that. And they had, it was so complex, it was a quick little video of the three different districts, because I think I could see you doing this with physical activity, like biking versus busing. And I find people and kids now are used to computers and learning that way, and I think it would be more impact than just reading something to start off with that.
We actually enlisted the, the help of somebody who did a video for the Heart and Soul of Essex Project, and he ended up referring us to a colleague of his, but, so we've already begun talks of creating that short video.
Good. Perfect. I've heard questions or comments. Brendan?
I apologize for not having read the full stud, the full report yet. One of the lines that sticks out for me in the executive summary is where it says on the second page, "Any added busing should be done in a way that preserves or increases current rates of active transportation." One of the things that shocked me in the survey was, at least my, my, my impression was that it was a low number of students that actually walk or ride bikes to school. So are there recommendations in your report on how you might increase the number of students that walk and ride their bikes to school?
Yeah, I think a lot of that comes back to the safety recommendation. So we, I, I, you know, originally in a draft of this report, we had create or support a safe routes to school program in your school, and then felt, took a step back, we had our internal review at the Health Department, and our physical activity, healthy communities coordinator read it, and she had a suggestion that sometimes when you put "start a program" in a report, that there's like a, a natural, like, so, so we shied away, because we want our recommendations to be acceptable, so we shied away from "start a program" and put in all the things you would do in the program, so that, so if, right, so it's more probable, right? So you don't have to feel like overwhelmed about starting a safe routes to school program, but if you make sure you've got enough crossing guards at the intersections, and you've got sheltered bike parking, like you can sort of like piece little bits of it at a time, and it's more manageable, and in the end, you're getting what you want anyway. So of course, having a safe routes to school program would be amazing, but again, like what's, I don't know what the feasibility and really programs like that are successful, more successful when you have a paid person in the position to do it, and I don't know...
And aside from when there's a paid person who coordinates it, a lot of times it's at more of a grassroots level, with a, a neighborhood will organize a program for that pocket of students and identify a route, and so the recommendations that we made are more for policy decisions on a, on a higher level. And once that safety is there, then it'll, it'll hopefully allow families and parents in neighborhoods to, to make those decisions on their own, if there's not a coordinator, which would be great.
Two things. One, I just wanted clarification. When I was reading this, I seemed to be under the impression, and that this was something that I think came up at the meeting back in April, that parents were concerned about the amount of bullying on buses, or that there may be bullying on buses, but the report seemed to indicate that you thought that it was less of a bullying situation on buses rather than more, and that the bullying would be more likely to occur in outside areas, like if they're walking half a mile, you know, during that unsupervised. Am I right in making that? I'm speaking, obviously, generally.
Yeah, that bullying on the active transportation side was based on a, a national research study, not necessarily what's happening in your community. I think the perception of safety and bullying on the bus, though, we did talk with school staff about, I think you were part of that interview.
Yeah, there seemed to be a perception locally, anyway, that, you know, social media itself was more of a concern than in person on the bus, and then one of the other studies, in addition to the, in outlining areas during the walk home, so that time in between class and the hallways is more likely to, to have bullying happen than, than on the bus, because there is at least one person supervising, even if it is just one for a large bus of kids.
It's not that it doesn't happen, but this is where it would be helpful to use the behavior data that some school districts look at, behavior data, where it happens anywhere, and then the, I guess they're the PBS, PBIS teams maybe, or the, I know my husband's a school counselor, so I know a little bit of, he looks at the Swiss data in his school district, that, whatever that stands for, but basically a recommendation around looking at what actually is happening and where are the incidences occurring, and if it is happening on one or more buses, maybe that's where you might focus an additional staff person if you could. But we just didn't have that, other than the perception, we didn't have the actual of what's going on, and we weren't able to get that.
Brendan? No, Marla?
I was contacted by a grandparent who was somehow missed in the parent survey. So, which is okay, but it led me to, it led me to wonder how helpful the feedback was from the community group that you, that you pulled together? And was it different feedback than you saw in the parent survey? How does it align?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit, and then I guess you can jump in. So the community group had a couple of parents, a few parents on it, but it also had more sort of representatives from professional organizations. So we had the town Department of Public Works Director. So that was a totally different perspective than what the parent has. So I think there was, you know, some, maybe some similar information, but the role of the advisory group was really to help read this report, get us data that we maybe wouldn't have access to otherwise. I don't know, maybe even Diane might want to jump in on that.
Yeah, I think in, in general, if I may, the parent survey was... Yeah, I think in, in general, if I may, the parent survey was not very, it was based, not in opinion, but just in facts of how things are being done. And we tried to keep it as much to, to, to that way as possible. We asked what people are doing and why they're doing it, not how they feel about it. And then the work with the advisory committee was as we processed and analyzed those data and then also gathered data from other community members in interviews and the student focus group, we, we helped, the advisory committee was invaluable in processing that information and helping us understand it because we're not from the community. And so it was two different purposes, I think, at their most basic levels. If that clarifies a little bit?
The advisory board and more sounding board, the individuals on it, yes, were more professional, but there were people like me. You know, there were some parents, there were some grandparents, there were, there were actually some former students, you know, that are rather recent, that they were late twenties, early thirties, so it's not that far away. So it, it was a cross-section of the community as to, so it wasn't just.
But they were used less as a focus group and more as a?
They were advising.
Yeah, gotcha. Thanks.
Other questions and comments?
Questions of Judy and Mark. Don't we have cameras on school buses because the junction is a walking district? I thought I remembered, don't they special ed buses or?
All of our buses.
Westford buses? I thought on a CCSU board, I remember one.
We did, we have a policy on how to use cameras.
Our fleet has them. All of the, all the buses are equipped.
And we are.
In the town.
And we're, they're all new buses will be equipped.
We'll have cameras. Okay.
Our understanding was that they were only used if there was an incident to go back and see like what happened, not that they're necessarily monitored on a regular.
No, they're not. We asked, we encouraged the administration to pull them randomly, but the cameras are rolling all the time.
Other questions or comments?
I have one or two. I didn't see anything in here and if I missed it, I apologize about whether you saw any information about how to encourage more folks to use the bus as opposed to driving their parents to school. Over the years, it seems like in Westford anyway, more and more parents drive their kids as opposed to having them ride up the bus.
Yeah, I think that gets to more of the beginning part of our recommendations where a lot of the reasons it seemed like parents are not using them is because the routes are either, you know, too long, they don't want to have their kids sitting on the bus for 45 minutes and they live 15 minutes away, or they're getting to school too early. So that's, so the recommendations are if those, less about encouraging people to use the bus on an individual basis, but if there's a way to, to organize the routes and minimize that idle time, that those systematic changes then could be promoted to parents and that might lead to additional bus use. So it's not, not so much like promoting it until those sort of system changes could be addressed.
Because at the same time, the, the largest reason that people did use the bus where it's available is because of scheduling reasons too. So if those changes were made, then would you think it would just happen naturally?
My second thought was in future studies, you might consider some kind of cost benefit analysis. When I first read, well, there are actually two recommendations that I read that made my eyes pop because of our fiduciary responsibility and one was putting an extra person on the bus. Yeah, it would be wonderful. But given all the choices we have to make about what to pay for, it probably doesn't rise high to the top for me. So, you know, I just think there has to be a cost piece of the equation and it might need something to think about researching or talking to folks about prior to making the recommendation. And the second one is harder for me and that is providing activity buses for everyone. I do think that's an equity issue and I think it would be a wonderful thing to do. It also could be a pretty expensive thing to do. So I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's one that we'll have to give some help to.
Yeah, that's definitely something that I think could be even incorporated as another recommendation that do, do a cost benefit analysis. I think our, like, our scope is health. So when we go back to the data, we're trying to put this together on what would be the best to promote health for kids, but you can't ignore that it costs, it will cost money. So definitely, I hear you loud and clear.
And as far as the, the recommendation about the extra monitor on the bus goes, the second bit of it was that it doesn't have to be an extra person for every bus on every run. And so I don't know what the capacity is to, to gather and analyze data from the board or the district, but it could be as little as, you know, one person on one bus in the morning and then just looking at, did, you know, collecting some behavioral data beforehand, how many incidents are there in a year, adding that person and then seeing if there's a change. And so, I mean, that's something that we could probably help with in terms of data analysis as part of our monitoring and evaluation. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Did you go across any data about monitor, instead of being a paid position, monitors being a volunteer opportunity?
I don't know if it was in any literature formally, but there were some opinions that were given from community members and advisory committee where people suggested parents or senior citizens who are interested in community involvement and also in like high school juniors and seniors who are looking for community service, who have a proven track record of responsibility or.
When you contacted the state overseas of all the bus operations, did he touch upon any different models? Because you mentioned that through your findings, there wasn't many districts or any districts that use monitors on a regular basis. But as I was thinking on that, is like the high schools envoicing on more and more community-centric coursework and that might touch upon like utilizing the services of the students as part of their community-centric courses or requirements. I don't know if anybody's explored that or?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. He, he didn't, you know, he wasn't forthcoming with that kind of information. I don't think he knew if that was happening, but I think those kind of courses are happening at high schools across the state, so I don't think it's a bad idea to think about. I don't know like what the liability or responsibility to put on it, but.
There would be lots of things to talk about.
Yeah.
Didn't we at one time, going back in Westford, try to have the eighth graders act as bus monitors, but then we found that the typical teenager behavior centric issues?
Yeah, well, you know, when I was growing up, I was crossing cars, had a belt, you know, I helped kids cross the road.
To look at the pros and cons of that.
You did it for money, I'm sure.
I think I was fifth and sixth grade.
Got a question. Lots of times we get great reports like this and then it's just kind of set aside, you know, because we has a board, we've got to come up with the routes of the transportation, we've got this going on. I was wondering if there was a way we can talk about this at our next meeting with maybe how we could research, like I know in Essex Junction, I think there's a bike safety committee and, and maybe we could have, once Brendan's done with the transportation, I'm just wondering if that committee could research and maybe look at how the town of Essex does it. Do we need to make that committee, you know, community-wide with Westford, Town of Essex? I just think there's great things in here and things that we could research, but if we just sit on it and set it aside, we'll never go back to it.
And actually, if we're, if you're talking about the same community, a member of that committee is on our advisory, was on this advisory committee, so he's.
I spoke with a couple of members at the community forum in, I think it was April and they seemed like they had a pretty great working understanding of the safe routes to school program, which is, was formerly a, a real program in Vermont through the AOT, I think. And so they, they're already working on it and so that's a great resource and it's a wonderful idea.
Does the town have anything like that, Mark?
No. We did, we did, in Westford, we had a safe routes to school grant, but it's pretty hard.
But the Bike Walk Advisory Committee is joint town and village.
Right.
And it's a Bike Walk Advisory Committee. So that is a great, that's a great thought.
But the kind of best you could do in Westford was kids would gather on the green and walk from the green to the school together, you know, which, which was fine to do once a week or whatever.
Right, we're doing that at Summit Street School now.
Yes, that's right.
We have a Walking Wednesday, walking school bus and it's been, the principal's been really creative as far as reaching out to our AED at the high school and like, so the boys lacrosse team will come out and we're the girls and.
Which was great.
And walk with the kids. And so they've got the youngers and the olders and they're tweeting their pictures and the olders, I think, are loving it.
They loved it. My son sang all the way to school, Moana.
Yeah. So, you know, who knew? So it does build community relations, so I think there's those pieces too. And, and I think in your comment, Marla, I was thinking, you know, part of the question is how, what do you, does this board want to learn from its principals, whether it's principals' reports or whatever? And if they could share, what do they do to encourage walking, biking, physical needs of arriving at school so you could get a understanding of what's happening in the different schools that might be one way to gain some information or insights?
So it occurred to me that maybe our next meeting is not the best time.
I think you're right.
I think this needs Beth's input, I think it needs principal's input, I think it needs Brian's input, but I also think we don't, I absolutely agree that we don't want to lose what's here. So I think we'll make certain that it's put on the new superintendent's desk with 3,000 other things and it will be important for us to keep bringing it up.
Still, at CCSU, we used to have a health and wellness coordinator.
Yes.
And the funding went away, I believe, didn't we have that?
We still have funding for that.
Still have funding. Town of Essex has that type of coordination.
Well, Karen will be doing the whole.
The whole new district.
The whole thing.
She's actually a member of the advisory committee also.
She's on that.
So there's so many people.
Yeah, Karen Sadowski is the wellness coordinator going forward for the whole new district and she was, I think, 40-plus years served here at the high school as a PE teacher. So she has a lot of relationships both internally and in the community. So I'm thrilled to know she serves there. Something else that Tom did, he's so bashful, didn't say that he attended the community safety meeting, which Mark and I were there and we also had like youth risk behavior survey, person who administers that, some principals were there and it was so nice to hear the police talk about, you know, the places where they have concerns about crosswalks or, you know, so I think having the police involved and we're so fortunate here to have EPD right here. One of the things that people said, I think that I could repeat, is how appreciative they are of the police presence at five corners for kids when they're crossing in the morning or at night. And so that's through EPD and that's another important input to have from that, our local police in designing safe routes. Thank you for coming to that.
And on that note, I'll just, you know, I mentioned before, we are still here, so we don't just do assessments and, and then, you know, we're still your public health department. So when you are feeling like you are ready to the point where you want to explore deeper any of these recommendations or figure out how to make them happen or implement them on the ground, that's a role that we play. So definitely feel free to loop us back in.
And I would just say that moving forward, the work of the Voices for Education group that you guys know about, can, we can help to get those messages out into the community so that people know what's going on. That's, that's a big focus of that group, so of course be in touch, which I know you will.
Okay. Anything else?
Just one, a quick question. There was a number that sort of stood out to me. The parent survey percentage, you mentioned the racial ethic mix was comparable to census data. Only 5% of parents who completed the survey reported that high school was the highest level of education, which seems, obviously, it doesn't seem representative of the entire community to me, like 5%. Does that mean, is there any concern that maybe like lower socioeconomic parents either didn't respond to the survey or weren't included with it? I mean, I just plain don't think that 95% of the parents in the junction, Westford and Essex, have higher than a high school education.
We can get you the answer to that, but our data analyst is really the only person who can definitively, I think she pretty much summarized by saying that geographically and demographically, it was relatively representative enough to, to use the data moving forward. But on the specific items, I'm not sure, but we can send that out in an email.
Okay. Yeah, it sort of stood out as an outline number to me.
But it is.
Yeah.
It is and I have seen the data and the data for these communities in terms of education level is pretty astounding. I mean, I agree with you, the 5% seems not quite right, but I think it's higher than you might expect.
And I don't think she was able to do like real statistical tests with the survey data, comparing it to the census data, but was able to make some generalization. So it, I don't, we can double check with Mallory, but yeah, there's some limitations.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, thank you both and we look.
We wouldn't want to go through a whole process and then not have you talk to us about it.
Right. And, yeah. And we look forward to following up and continuing to work on this. I think there's some good recommendations here and, yeah, we definitely have work to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move forward. The next item on the agenda is a board self-evaluation process. Kim has been more than a little busy.
Very messy category, however.
We've talked about two pieces. The CCSU boards were used to using an evaluation instrument on an annual basis that was largely based on a tool developed by the VSBA. And Kim and I are going to talk about it and see if we think it's workable. My goal would be to hand it out prior to the next meeting if we can get that accomplished and have it compiled, then I could get some feedback to you over the summer and we could talk about it in August. The other piece that the Essex town boards have done is have just a short, like two or three question survey that goes out after every meeting so that people have a chance to react if there are things that have happened at the meeting that they want to give feedback about. For those of us who are on the RED study, it's probably a bit like Brian's reflection, you know, we did the reflection pieces, but that's a way to, on an ongoing basis, stay on top of what's working and what's not working. And then annually, I think it's good to step back and think about all the things we're responsible for as a board and how are we doing and are we sticking to board business? to board business, or are we trying to do administrative work, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where things are at with that at the moment, and any questions or comments? Okay, so let's move on to policy, and there isn't any action required on this one, so I missed that. Mark or Diane, do you want to take over the policy piece?
Well, the policies are, are as submitted, you saw them last time. We're seeing C-20 and C-21 once again.
So let's do those first, so those are for second reading. Any comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve policies C-20, student conduct and discipline, and C-21, search and seizure at second reading.
Some moved.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, and then we have a first reading?
First reading of Title I comparability. Keely's been really good at, at providing comments and to tighten it up, and so I would suggest that we approve this at first reading.
Okay, anybody have any comments or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve policy D-4, Title I comparability at first reading.
Some moved.
Thanks, Andre. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So I think we have one mandated policy left, is that correct? So we won't finish second reading by July 1st, but hopefully we'll be able to finish second reading in August before students come, so do you think that's the goal? Okay, good. And then we know you're working on communications.
Yeah, I, I've emailed Emily Simmons at VSBA to talk about social media policy.
Okay.
I just mentioned it to Liz, because this is literally happening with the last day here, and so, like, I'll, I'll email her back and say, hey, when would you like to chat, and we'll, we'll chat and see where she's gone. She has said that she has no template, okay, but she's worked with a couple boards on creating one, so it, right now it's an individual board thing versus a template. I mentioned it to Mark, because this is the first time I'm seeing him, and there's a potential to ask, ask his colleagues if there's something out there for some, you know, that perhaps Emily doesn't know everything. I was going to do, like, a Google search going farther, but I figured I'd touch base with individuals first to get a grounding for where to go.
I did ask Nicole Mayes also, since she hasn't responded, but she probably will. She's been a little busy, too.
Yeah. Emily's probably the right person. Judy and Mark, do you have other policies that you think need to be in place for the smooth running of schools?
I don't think so at this point. I think the work that Beth will want to facilitate early on is, are the procedures, making sure we sync those up. That, that's a huge amount of work right there. The more policies we add, the more we put on her plate initially, so I think we should stick with the mandated and the two that we've approved that are not mandated but recommended.
Yeah.
And let her get to work with leadership team on syncing up our current procedures through it.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
Great.
I think there's several that you brought up that I think are important to consider, but maybe not right off the bat.
Good. All right, let's move on then to task team updates, communications.
So we have a Facebook page for Voices for Education, so thank you to the board for approving that. I don't know if anyone's seen it. Ben has been populating it with some pictures and meeting notes from our work, so just check that and like it if you can, just to just get the word out there that that exists. That's the place where all the information is going to be housed. I met today with Reed Dyer, who is where the Great Schools Partnership Technical Assistant Person for the high school, who's working on proficiency-based work with the administration here at the high school, just to make sure that our work is aligned with the work that they're doing, and that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. So that was a great meeting, because we're both, we're both benefiting from this grant opportunity, but it's really important that we are working together and, and that the administration knows what we're doing and other way around, so that, that was great. And from that work came, on June 21st, is a teacher in-service day, so kids are done with school, but the teachers will all be in school, and Erin McGuire is going to take some time during that in-service day on the 21st and give an overview of the Voices for Education work in that day, and just to let the high school teachers know that in the fall, there'll be opportunity for all of the teachers to be involved in, in the work that we're doing, and, and, again, an opportunity to raise the visibility of, of that work. And that's pretty much, and besides working with the transportation, follow-up from that, the communications team, we, we did follow-up with all the people who had attended that forum and gave them some information, moving, to, to just to keep, keep the ball rolling and let them know that this is, is underway, and that went out last week, and that's what we've been working on.
Good. Questions? Okay, transportation.
Yeah, so last Tuesday, we published an update to the, to the website, which pretty much was a summary of what I reported at our last meeting. Since then, we've, we've pushed it out on Facebook, and I think Twitter, and also on Front Porch Forum.
And Downtown in Essex.
Right, so all over Facebook. And I was in touch with Gary yesterday, and we have a couple of other updates that he wanted me to share, and that is that Mountain Transit is beginning a very robust advertising campaign to recruit new, new drivers, so that'll be kicking off this week. If you, if you see lots of advertising, that's what that's all about. And also, there is construction work happening to make changes at Hiawatha and ADL, and those look to be on track prior to the beginning of the next school year, and there are plans afoot, but nothing finalized yet, for an interim solution for Summit and Fleming, and more information will be coming forward about that, because we know that's the most challenging aspect of our, of our transportation expansion plan. Not exactly sure on when we might see draft routes. Gary is hoping to see something by Friday, so that we can begin sort of taking a look at what those are, and how we want to start, you know, respond, how we want to respond, and then also begin to communicate with the community about, as the plan is coming together, but nothing firm yet in terms of routes or design of the plan. So, anything else that Mark or Judy want to weigh in on?
I would just share that Marilyn sent, Ellen Frederick sent a bus manual, so that we have this, what they're using in Lemoil, and so we'll pass that on to Beth and align the bus behavioral expectations and reporting, and what paperwork looks like, and hand that over to Beth, so that we have that, those expectations in place that they talked about earlier.
Good. Keely?
I just have a question. When we're talking about draft routes, is that just the road that the bus goes on, or does it also include stop density? Like, there's five Summit students within a hundred yards of my house, and will there be five stops, or two stops, or one stop, or is that not decided in this stage?
Bus stops are being charred, I believe Brendan are being chartered as well.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that it's routes, but also stops, and a number of stops that are being a part of that plan, so.
Okay.
And something that I remembered, I don't know if Brendan or Gary would be interested, but our community on West Hillcrest Road and Essex Junction and Hillcrest Road, a group of us met with the trustee, or the Capital Plan Improvement Committee, with the Essex Junction trustees, there's representatives on that, and Tim, one of the neighbors that used to be a board member, actually took video of Hillcrest, of parents, when they're driving their kids down through there, leaving and going, he went right out and videotaped it, because we've never had a real good lock on the speed and what's happening there, and that really made an impression on that committee, so they're putting sidewalks on Hillcrest, because they saw how well-used it was. You might, I would assume Tim might have saved that videotape, it might be something Gary may want to look at, because the traffic studies never showed how inconsiderate, inconsiderate the parents were when they're driving, you know, so I, I think that would be something to see if Tim, oh my God, I've already forgotten his last name.
Kemmer.
Oh, yeah, I would have a feeling he's kept it.
That's, yeah, that's interesting. Okay, so who, Kim?
I just have, the bus manual suggestion and availability sort of triggered my thinking to wonder, as they're hiring and we're setting up routes and we're working with this company, is there an opportunity that there'll be some sort of, you know, if we were to be using restorative justice or something in our buildings, that we're helping them to understand something that feels consistent with what we're doing around discipline or behavior in our schools, and I didn't, I don't imagine that was part of the bid process, but I'm hoping that they are-
It is actually, it's language in the contract that states that they will be working with us around student management. They have a, their approach is video on bullying, they put it in for thirty minutes, and drivers sit around and drink coffee and watch the video, and then there's some talking afterwards, so we've tried to institute a more hands-on approach in Essex Town, actually inviting drivers to a morning meeting with kids and with a teacher, and talking about setting bus rules at the beginning of the year. They're not adverse to that, they don't come willingly, we have to do some arm bending, because they work, and the matter of assistance riding on the bus, it's a non, it's a non-starter, because there's nobody out there.
Right.
Aside from the cost, these people are busy, and, and most of them work other jobs.
Can't even get the drivers.
It's a problem, but they're very, I think many drivers are willing to know what more they can do to help manage the bus rather than sit down and be quiet.
So it is part of what they're expecting to be, the startup for this work. And, and I think Beth will be working with the principals, you know, around those practices going forward too. Practices and expectations, so it's not building-based, but rather district-wide, these are our expectations regarding behavior. And we're meeting every Wednesday at ten o'clock with Brian Donio and Gary, and Principal of Fleming, Dan Ryan, and Suzanne Burnley from Summit Street, just continuing to explore that challenge and how to work through that, and Bruce Murdo, around Krebs and Lansing's recommendations with the civil engineers for drop-off and pickup, so it's
So I think, I would just say, the sooner we can figure out how potential bus routes and get information to parents, the better.
Yeah, I think the challenge expressed to me is that the company, the bus company isn't contractually obligated to provide those routes until mid-July, so he's been trying to apply pressure, as, as I'm sure you have as well, to get them as soon as possible, and so that's why he's hoping that maybe by Friday he'll see something at least.
Yeah.
I'm just very conscious if things are going to change in the town, and what a hard time you had with that, when it happened. I think folks in Westford have some particular expectations in their head about how long they want their kids to be on the bus, the sooner people know and can process and get used to the fact that things might not be exactly as they had hoped, I think the better off we'll be.
That came out loud and clear at the forum as well.
The closer we get to school and people's expectations aren't met, the worse hope for it may be. Kim?
And I think to piggyback on that as well, having heard from, I think, Gary and maybe others at the meeting, that when they were at that forum, they came away with at least three things they were going to do differently from what they had heard from parents and people that were at the forum. So while I can appreciate not wanting to necessarily float exact routes, where there are some broader generalities that they might be able to share, communities and parents are, where, as Keely was saying, five kids right there, you know, might be able to help inform where a stop makes sense. If there's going to be a stop, does it make a sense for it to be, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know that that's a level of detail we want total feedback on, but there are some things that if we have some general information, parents might be able to fight, provide feedback to before mid-July or August, when the buses start rolling.
Yeah, and people are already on edge, because school is starting.
Yeah, and I think between now and then, and then from July till the start of school, communicate, communicate, communicate is really going to help us with even information that seems like maybe we want to wait till there's more information, but we'll, we'll figure that out, but I think it's really important, and again, what we heard at the forum was people really just want to have some information sooner.
And I think we learned from the red study.
Right.
Never hurts to say the same thing over and over, even if you get really sick of it, Keely.
I think people would love to hear then that things are resolved for Hiawatha and ADL, that like-
Yeah.
We figured out how safe bus drop-off and pickup is going to happen. If you have more details about what that means, then we could share those details, like buses will be on the right side of the building, and ours will be-
Yeah.
Separated by a Jersey barrier or whatever.
So people can start putting it in their heads, and, and just even the fact that Summit and Fleming, that we have engineers looking at that, that there are ongoing meetings about it, you know, I think, yes, those kinds of things are good. Okay, anything else on transportation? Anything extra on policy? Okay, local board and statewide updates, local boards, Kim?
I just, I, we've not had a meeting since we had our last carousel, but I-
We were all together.
I, we were all together, and I think I updated everybody at that point, but the, the land transfer concerns seem to have been addressed by the meeting we had in advance, and I've not heard anything differently since then, except some appreciation for the opportunity to have met and had the conversation, so I feel as though we're in a good place or where we would have expected to have been at this point with, with regard to the unification.
Good.
Well, thank you, Kim. Thank you for the preparation you did, which helped that meet go as well as it did.
Time well spent.
Yes. Liz, do you have anything? No, Marla, anything from people?
We haven't met since Carousel. We canceled a meeting we were going to have last night, so this board won't have to worry about agreements being held over into July, so, from the PC.
Not that one at least.
Not that one. Not that one. Okay.
So, other than that, I'm not sure. We need to still meet. There's discussion, there's something the trustees have to sign about our land deal. I think there's something we as a board still need to vote on to approve Mike Smith as the chair to sign the land deals, but Mike Smith has been waiting for a response, I think, back from Paul O'Brien, as to whether he needs the board to vote on that, or if he just can do it.
Yeah, lots of times you didn't need the board to authorize.
Westford, we're considering to meet with the select board jointly. We're getting closer and closer to final drafts of the easements, and it's going to occur for the transfer of the land, it's just working out the easements to ensure that the school continues to enjoy the uses. We have been, had a little bit of a wrinkle with a couple other committees in town wanting to review the easements, but that's more between the select board and those committees, and we're separating out from it, because it's not, I don't, I don't believe it's within our- And we're separating out from it because it's not, I don't believe it's within our purview as the local board to have that.
It's the, it's the Planning Commission and the Conservation Commission, which are creations of the Select Board. So we're kind of, that communication for them to do. So the easement pretty much seems to be finished. And the easements for parcel one, the school and the fourteen acres, to make sure the town can still use it for elections and it's just that kind of stuff. And then for the parcels two and three, it's a use agreement, mostly for parcel two. And the hat seems to so far be coming along and seems like it's focusing on what's in the best interest of students. We do have to figure out how to divide up maintenance costs that, where the use agreement contemplates a process for making decisions about how capital improvements to the property and so forth. So I, it has some interesting political nuances, but I think we're getting there. So.
On that, when you mentioned things on capital improvements on those pieces, those pieces are owned by municipal now, Westford Municipal?
They will be after, well, we, we decided that we wouldn't do the transfer. The quitclaim deeds are ready, the title search has been done, but we're not going to transfer the property till after school ends, so we don't have any...
So when you mentioned capital improvements, coming to an agreement on that, are they expecting the school to be improving the municipal land?
I think they're, it's contemplated that the school might want to make improvements on the municipal land because that's where softball field is and the dugouts for the softball field and some pieces like that. So we're talking about putting in the use agreement an exact split. And we haven't decided what that split should be, but maybe fifty-fifty. And, but we can also, it's written so that you can change it down the road. So if down the road there is something the school really wants, that the town says, our rec department isn't ever going to use that, our citizens aren't ever going to use that, then the school district could revise the agreement to say, we're going to pay for a hundred percent of that and vice versa.
Right, and will it be restricted to certain areas? Because that's an awful lot of acreage if we're expected to take care of it.
Parcel two is only fifteen. We're contemplating any of that on parcel three.
I think the changes that could occur or any improvements would be centric, unnecessary or identified as needed for the school, but not to necessarily for the needs of the town, but more geared towards meeting the needs of the school.
It, it's about ball fields, basically. And the rec department will probably use them also, so.
The reason I bring that up, I just remember the PC years ago with the Saxon Hill property, before it got leased to the town of Essex. We had community members coming to the school board upset that we hadn't taken care of, taking care of the trees and the expense of the trees and the trails and things like that. It was an expense that a school district didn't want to be involved with. So, that's all I'm thinking about, that's a lot of acreage, it's a lot of forest. I just want to make sure their expectations aren't us maintaining.
It's going to be town, so the forest part is going to be town, so they'll be responsible for that kind of stuff. Yes.
Just with respect to the use agreement, will that provide for school policies to govern the use of those properties, parcel two? I recall there being an issue with respect to weapons and carrying, discharging, et cetera. What does that mean for parcel three?
Right, so there's still a couple outstanding questions, but the way it's written now is that school policies will extend parcels two and three during school hours and during school activities.
There was also a recommendation from the town attorney to, for the town to adopt an ordinance.
Well, the use agreement is going to say they have to post it all within ninety days of us signing the agreement. And then within a hundred and eighty, they're going to be asked to do a, an ordinance.
Thank you.
And so far it hasn't created any waves, but we'll see. All right, statewide updates. The governor vetoed the budget and the yield bill today. I think we just don't know what's going to happen. I heard both Nicole Mace and Darren Atman, I think, from Vermont, and he, hey, on the radio tonight. And I understood them both to say that school districts should move forward on whatever timeline they're on and not wait for this to be resolved. So, of course, the more that that happens, the harder it is to have a statewide solution.
And I think there's something Judy and Mark can probably help me recall with respect to those settled by June thirtieth. Would not necessarily be vacated by anything that happened subsequent to that. And those settled after that date might be impacted by whatever comes of future agreements.
I think nobody knows at this time because none of the versions that have been written have been acceptable to both sides. So I think, I think the scariest thing, in my opinion, is that we could end up with something that is bad for us and somehow the consequences aren't understood. Hopefully that won't happen because I think the Superintendent's Association, the School Boards Association are at the table, but it still makes me nervous.
And I think in that category, the thing I'd be most concerned about is this requirement to return dollars to the state.
Exactly.
That we may have anticipated differently in proposals as we were beginning negotiations a year ago.
We've already built some of those savings into our budget, so.
I think we've been articulating that concern to our local representatives that...
And, but there are some districts who didn't, like the dial issue, budget and health care at the same dollar as the previous year. So they, they will have savings from there some. So it's hard because, you know, someone can hear that and think it's going to apply everywhere. So we just have to make sure our voices are heard.
The only other plug I'll give for statewide stuff is we all probably received in our inbox from the SBA, the request to complete a survey that will help inform the retreat work that will be happening next Wednesday. So if folks can take a few minutes, it doesn't take a lot of time. That information will be used in thinking about our planning for the coming year.
I did it. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Transition.
It's no Judy.
She said you were doing all the talking, I heard.
Beth is coming to town.
Do you have you stacked for her, you guys?
Well, I can start with a couple of...
You're going to stay on July 1st.
I can, there's a lot to talk about, as there always is, and I can talk about a couple of fun things.
Go ahead, Natalie.
Judy doesn't have fun things to talk about. I think the fruits of our labor are starting to bear out. Some things have happened over the last couple of weeks that are pretty encouraging. One of which is we did meet with Beth for a good part of the day last Thursday. We're going to visit with her next, tomorrow and then next Thursday for pretty much the whole day. And we've designed that day around her transition, but also some, I mean, getting to know the issues, but also some things that we needed, some decisions made on, or at least some draft decisions, decisions which she needs to be part of. So I think, can't speak for Judy, but I think we're finding more and more that the, the issues that we need to deal with, she has to be at the table. And she's just availing herself as much as she can to the conversations, which is really a huge asset. But some fun things that are happening. Peter Farrell, who's the principal at the elementary school, has put together a two-day workshop, the nineteenth and twentieth of June, on a reading workshop for two weeks, for two days. We've, at least in the town, have come to recognize that a number of our special, we don't have a consistent approach to instruction across all buildings and special education, especially that relates to kids who are not quite, who are not eligible for special ed services but are still tangled up and need some support. And special educators have not always got the types of training that our interventionists or specialized teachers have received. So Peter's put together a two-day training for a good dozen of our folks at the elementary school. And joining Peter will be a number of folks, two from Fleming, three from Westford, and an EL teacher and an SLP from CCSU as well. So it just, it's just a great sort of indication that, you know, that we're reaching across the aisle and we're, we are identifying training needs and support for staff that we all share in common. So that's, that's really a cool thing.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
The other thing that we, we did is we had a family from North Africa move here unexpected who were homeless and are living in a motel. They were living in the town and now unfortunately they're in a homeless, a safe place in South Burlington. And we're, we're using one of Judy's little CCSU buses, which is very cute, those are cute little buses. Because we have four kiddos, one at the high school and then, and then four in the town across our three buildings. And they're getting a ride as a family to school for the remainder of, of the year. And that's just a really sweet thing. I mean, other than trying to taxi kids here and, and again, just shows that through a partnership, we can, we can work these, we can work these things out. Ellen Thompson and her web team, Ellen is, is leading that body of work, has been really, really hard at work with ET Town staff and Chittenden Central staff, including Ben Dickey, who's been a real asset, in mapping the sites on our respective websites and starting to build content into the new web. Not ready to launch by any means, but we've really, really done a tremendous amount of work and are getting, are getting us ready for that eventual switching of the, flipping of the switch. What's been really interesting for Ellen and for the team is the issue of ADA compliance, American Disabilities Act compliance, and all digitized documents need to be compliant now with ADA across our country. And there's a, there are three hundred and fifty schools that need more attention and one, one of our, and we're one of those districts that we, we have to do some catch-up. But all schools in the nation have to be ready by, I think, January of two thousand and eighteen. So the, the compounding factor is not only we're doing new content, but we're also need to make, we need to get smart around what ADA requirements are. And that's been a, that's been really important work and I really give the team a lot of credit for getting their heads wrapped around that. You asked a question about policy anymore. I think there's many that we, we should be thinking about, not, you know, right off the bat, but this, this notion of where you live and where you go to school next year has become a topic. And so Judy and I spent a good hour last week with, with Beth based on input from our administrative colleagues on generating a list of things that might be considered extenuating under Article seventeen, which gives Beth the authority to waive, waive the requirement to attend your local school if there are extenuating reasons based on parent volunteering to do that. You can't just voice that on a parent, they'd have to agree. So I think that that was a helpful meeting, Judy, for Beth to start thinking about, Judy's done a nice job of taking care of some of the ones that have come her way by just saying no. It really works. We do it more often. In a nice, really diplomatic way.
I do it nicely.
Very nicely, yeah.
They left his friends.
I do think that that's going to be an important policy discussion for the board to get into and not wait too long before you start having that discussion. Then finally, Judy and I, we're part of, we have a joint meeting with our special ed director colleagues in the region and curriculum coordinator colleagues and superintendents. We call it the, the joint meeting. I know, I know.
You have voices for education.
Yeah, it's, it's an annual meeting. This is our seventh year doing it and we enlisted the support of Sue, Matt, Susan McCormick to come in and facilitate the day. And the planning team, which I was a member of, felt that it was time to sort of reset the dial and think about the region. Fourteen out of seventeen districts participated for the day work session. And our theme was equity in education. And I found it to be a, a really interesting and deeper-than-usual dialogue around what that really means to school leaders. Oftentimes we discuss things, but we don't really dialogue, go deeply about things. And that was a day that Sue helped to organize, and she's very good at it, to allow us to suspend our judgment around things like what does student success mean? And it's really interesting because we don't have all the same, you know, definition. But I thought it was important to bring to the board tonight because I know that you'll be diving into that next year and know that our sister districts within this region have the same questions that we have as education leaders, both at the board level and at the district level around how do you address the issue of equity, knowing how important it is for the success for all students? So that, we've got the notes, they came out today of all of our charts and things. And at some point, I think Beth, who was there, was great. We had to be able to share some of our thinking as you start to frame your policy work around the outcomes for kids in the district. And I think this would be instructive for you to know what we're thinking. That's all I got.
That's all? Well, I would complement that with Brian Donio started yesterday.
Sorry, Brandon.
Yesterday was my first day not working.
Did you see him sit up like this?
I know, I was fearful about it.
I didn't see Brian sitting up like that at one o'clock today. He was more like, he was more like this.
I think he came from a meeting at VPR.
Oh, that was...
He is in transition. It was kind of fun to brief with him at the end of the day yesterday and he said, oh, you guys have added a lot more acronyms. Some I don't even know. And, you know, to just kind of get the lay of the land, connect with all of the directors and the office folks as well. And then he was out today, as Brendan said this morning, but then joined our cabinet meeting this afternoon. It was a really helpful cabinet meeting because we spent a lot of time with the team talking about what we needed in support staff and teacher negotiations. Kim and I negotiated with support staff from three forty-five till this meeting started. And then we'll be negotiating tomorrow with teachers from four till we end and we'll have an executive session to brief you on that. But the topic that we continue to admire at these meetings is always that of central office space. And trying to figure out, you know, what it's going to look like and have it be identified in a way that we let our teachers know, this is where you go to find whomever. And so there was a lot of conversation about that and we decided to dedicate next Thursday's meeting to having Beth join us and really talk through the space issues and declaring, this is where you go for these services and this is where you go for those services. And so that conversation, although it sounds small, with it comes, you know, the new phone system is coming in, so we have to get all the phones connected. And how are we going to organize the phone system as far as what it looks like for reception? And what does reception look like in two different buildings? I mean, once you start to go down that rabbit hole, you can go quite a ways. And so having Brian join us and really taking charge and having Bruce Murdo come in and look at... and look at some fit-up needs and I just feel really confident now, knowing somebody's there to do some of that work that we just haven't had the capacity to do. So the other thing that's been busy for me this week is Catherine Greiken, who's the new principal at Hiawaka, is starting to, you know, begin an orientation process along with Brian, who needs it, and Beth. So we talked a little bit about how to make it efficient as possible by doing some of the common things they all need to know in one sitting. And trying to get that scheduled out all before June 30th. And, and our finance system is coming along. You know, the goal is to make payroll for full-year employees by July 7th.
By what date?
July 7th.
So, you know, we have to continue our work on that. And again, having Brian seated will help with that transition process with Tyler. It's, that process was much bigger than any of us had anticipated. So, you know, it's, it's been a lot of entry work. And Brian sort of described it as, it feels like a riptide here. And I think that because of the amount of work and where we find ourselves now near the end of the year. But we're swimming with that riptide and working towards completion, knowing that not everything we wanted to have ready will be ready, but that we will prioritize that which must be ready and work from there. But that's all I got.
Questions?
A very basic question, and this goes, I think, to the central office question is, where will, where will Beth's office be?
She was actually in my office measuring the curtains last week. She was part of the animoto that was, they roasted me a little bit. But I think she'll be sharing the space in both buildings.
Yeah. She didn't really care for the ant traps I have around by.
For getting out of there and turning left is not a trick eye.
Yeah, right now it's tough to leave there.
I know we do this with a lot of the, like, individual schools, do this with teachers and whatnot. I know our support staff, the administrative staff, has been literally working their butts off in some cases. Like, they've been in, I've heard, on Saturdays, Sundays, doing work for multiple hours. Is there any way or anything that we can do as a board to express our thanks to them for all the extra effort that they've been putting in for making this transition happen?
That's nice, Patrick. They, non-exempt folks get overtime, of course. I mean, we, we pay them that time and a half when they're putting those, those hours in. But I, I don't know, we can give that some thought. I think any gesture on your part would be very appreciated. Cause they are, especially certain people are working really, really hard. Everyone's working hard, but there's a group that's like wicked.
Yeah, someone that saw the Hannafords on like a Sunday evening, they'd just gotten out of the office, so I know they're.
That's a really nice, a nice thought and I think anything would be appreciated. A year off might be nice.
We can't do that.
We got it.
Okay. I, I have one question. I don't know if you can answer it. I met with a young lady here who's a high school student, a civics class, doing an interview with her for her class.
I think a lot of us did.
And she was wonderful, but I got to thinking when she's emailing me, she's got a CCSU address. So when students start in August, I mean, you've got all these students that usually come in year after year and they got CCSU and you just gotta worry about, I think, the freshmen.
We're migrating, we're migrating.
So what happens with those students come August or when they've gotta be going online? Are they all changing an address to EW?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah. We're migrating our systems now. That's another, we, I didn't really touch on technology, but it's huge what we're doing.
All the teachers, from all the staff, everybody's gotta be switched over.
From, from both, as it's town and.
And we have a contractor who's gonna assist with that, external contractor.
And then another question I had, because Brian has been out of things for a while on that financial side, is Marilyn Fredericks, are we having her mentor him?
They're, they've met once. She's actually in a week of retirement in St. John's right now. But she'll be back next week. She's continuing to support the district and will be helping with the transition of the budget work that was done with Brian and help support him through that. So she's still on. She has been amazing as far as what she's done in that void of, of that position. Just incredible. Can't say enough about her support. And the new website, the new EWSD website will be operational as well. So you'll, a lot, you haven't seen a lot of what we've done in the background, but it'll be-
It's coming.
It's coming to a, to a school district near and dear.
You may be the first to have those email addresses, right? We have our board, the EWSD. We won't have to be converted. We're all set.
We'll just have to get rid of the old ones. It'll be nice not to be going back and forth between two. With just our regular legacy boards though, and then the CCSU board, because we've gotta operate till-
Yeah, that's true. We'll have to keep them.
Are we gonna have all our same addresses?
Yeah. Yeah, you're gonna keep those.
Or will we eventually all be converted to EWSD to make it easier or?
You're gonna have to have both. Yeah.
We're gonna have to keep both. And then when-
In December.
It's completely shut down, we'll get rid of one. Okay. Just curious how that's working. And then before you move on, is there a suggestion by Judy or Mark as to something special we could do for support staff? That Patrick brought up, cause I know my husband has to work a weekend. You may get time and a half, but you've still been away from your family. It's still a little piece of something that, because when we're employing them, I think it's important that we do something special. They said they would think about it.
Yeah. We'll have plenty of time to chat with them, won't we?
Yeah. And I do, the only thing I would caution in that we'd be sensitive to is that it's probably hard for us to know who, who, how and when the people, folks are putting in their hours to contribute to this work. I know how many hours we spent with, like Deb, who's not getting overtime work, you know? How late at night we receive emails from her. So I just, I think being sensitive to that, knowing that this effort has probably impacted literally everyone.
Yes.
Including, you know, right down to our classroom. Up to all of your staff and the, everybody in between. So I love the idea of figuring out how to celebrate and acknowledge and appreciate that.
Yeah. Somehow you've used teacher and staff appreciation suggestions you've had in the past. You know, those might be something to consider. I'll tell you, a note goes a long way still to just be note, just having somebody notice and thank you. I think that means a lot too. So, you know, we can put our heads together and come up with some ideas, but maybe it would just be like something that's celebratory in all of our schools and offices, you know?
And I think the frame has to be hope, hope and all and helpfulness. I mean, I think there's some, I think there's still many people who are literally just sort of, hate to use the word grieving, sounds a little bit melodramatic, but you know, still grieving a little bit. And so I don't wanna, we don't wanna focus on that. It's time to move on and start sharing anecdotes and stories that are starting to reframe who we are, rather than what we used to be. And I think that's gonna take time, but whatever, however we recognize and if we can point north, I think that would be really important.
But I do, I, well, things are changing for everyone. I do feel like it's the central office staffs-
It's the most effective.
Have had the brunt of the work. And certainly, you know, our board did something during Staff Appreciation Week and maybe other boards did as well.
We did.
We did too. So I think, well, you think, you can make a recommendation. I suspect the other big impact is principals and leadership team up. I mean, teachers, I know that staff, they get honored by the parents. And we already, legacy boards already did thank yous. But I just know if I was a Prudential Committee principal at this point, Essex Junction School District, I know that the concern that I heard throughout the year was this transportation issue. That's a whole big piece that's added to them. So I can see the Town of Essex principals, there's other pieces that they've got that's being added on. So I think we need to consider not just the support staff, but the leadership. Central office. Well, we'll let, Mark and Judy, cause they're the ones who really know. Really know. Okay.
Their gift is their retirement.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything beyond the regular items for the next agenda?
Are you communicating? Takeaways?
Are you gonna communicate?
Well, that comes after the agenda.
After the agenda.
Yeah. Okay. So what are her three takeaways from this meeting? The Department of Health Transportation Expansion Report.
Yeah, and when are we gonna get the final version of that report? Are you gonna?
Yeah.
We got it today Brendan. You and I got it already.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
So I think-
Oh, the whole presentation.
The whole report.
Oh, you're right. Sorry.
Yeah.
So depending on the timing, if you can get a link to that report to put in the takeaways, that would be good.
Yeah, I'm sure I can talk to Ben to have it put out.
Yeah, Ben will help you. They left hard copies.
Yeah, so there's gotta be an electronic one.
They, I think they said they'd give us the PDF tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
And I think because that is so dense and there's a lot there, the executive summary, if that's, you know, I know that's the first couple of pages of that, or if this is a handout that's different than the first couple of pages that are the executive summary. Anything that makes that information easy for people to look at quickly and-
Takeaway, but I think-
Is the executive summary in the first page?
It wasn't the first couple of pages. I just didn't know if this is the same or different.
Is that some large study that you might wanna keep that, are all our takeaways? Well, before we go there, I'm just thinking, do we wanna say anything in our takeaways about the fact that the board talked about the recommendations and the fact that this one event was cost prohibitive and not found anywhere else? I don't want folks to read this and think we're gonna have issues on us. So I think, I think we might be really cautious about that.
Yeah, I think we, we received the report tonight, but we certainly haven't had time to really discuss it as a board.
Or how to message it.
Yeah, or whether or not we wanna actually adopt any of the recommendations.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, they were here, they presented it, we asked questions, but we didn't discuss as a board whether or not we felt like the recommendations should be implemented into our transportation policy.
Right.
Right. So I think that, yeah, that's been important to say. It was the heart of our meeting, you're right. We did finish up two policies, so that could certainly be a piece of what we talk about. And, and then I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to talk about that that Beth has been in district, meeting with Mark and Judy on a fairly regular basis and that work is being done to decide where, how, where people are gonna physically be next year.
And that Brian started yesterday. I don't think that's important for people to know.
And the other, to add to the Beth pieces, not just with Judy and myself, she's also meeting with other members of our leadership, building leadership. She met with Amy and Ellen for two hours. So Judy and I are strategically staying out of conversations so not to create awkwardness and so they can just be candid and talk through some things. And so that's, she's meeting with lots of folks.
Patrick, do you think you have it?
Oh yeah, that's funny.
I didn't know if-
I, I mean, I can, I can expand it out, I can play with it a little bit, you know, just to, I'll cite it to you and then shoot me any recommendations.
Thanks, Pat.
Do you, I was just wondering, part and parcel with the Department Health Transportation Report is just a bullet, some information that may be somewhat newer? Is the July target date for bus routes or any other transportation pieces?
What I was planning on doing was similar to what I did after the last meeting, was to write another update.
Yep.
Because there's a chance next week that we'll, you know, the group, the, the team meets tomorrow as part of the regular meeting, so there could be updates that come out of that meeting as well. But we also have the health report to share.
Yep.
And by Friday, we'll know whether or not we've received draft routes. So I was thinking that like Monday or Tuesday, we could issue another update and then share it out on social media.
Yeah.
And that could be separate from-
Yeah, I wanna do, I wanna do broad strokes in the health report. And then with the exception of the, the bus monitoring, like, I agree that we should, I should mention that specifically. Cause I think that was the one thing in there that people would look at and be like, wow, that's a really great idea. That's gonna cost us $200,000 a year.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Pat.
Yep.
So we do need an executive session.
We do.
Before we leave transportation, just because of the fact that there's gonna be a push on hiring bus drivers and there's going to be a need for quite a few, wouldn't that be a good thing to get out to our communities? There might be people that are volunteer age, that are looking for things to do and say, I'd like to-
I could get my CDL.
To let them know there's a push on and to be looked at for it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great idea.
Gary actually asked that at a meeting last Wednesday, if there was a way for us to advertise that information.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that the trustees would put it on their Village, the website that goes out.
We're trying to hold the company accountable for doing some of that work. I mean, it's, it's a good idea. We've, we've implored them to think more creatively about how to recruit, one of which is to advertise in print media in our community, Facebook, you know, Front Porch Forum. It's easy to enable them by just doing it ourselves, so there's a-
Well, if they've got their content that they're putting up as their tag for their advertisements and they share that with us, we can make it available through all sorts of avenues. But I think that it would be incumbent on them to put their requests.
Yes, we're knocking on those doors.
I think if it's like a request from us though, with like trustees or select board, it would be more apt to, to be better, that type of thing from us to ask them to put it in their news releases. That's right. I think Kim could just say that it would be helpful if the bus company created the content.
And we just, or conduits.
Yeah. Okay. So I will, unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion that we go into the executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
So moved.
Thanks, Liz. Any discussion, always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And we'll go to the conference room.
Thank you, ITN.